Welcome to the No BS Debate featuring the candidates for City Council in District 8. We are your moderators. My name is De La Vaca.
And I'm Sarah Ali.
We want to thank the candidates for coming out to represent their communities. We also want to thank Denver Open Media, the Open Media Foundation, and Civic Matters for hosting this event. And lastly, we want to thank you, the audience, for participating in the democratic process.
So, the debate rules are as follows. We, as your moderators, will ask each of our individual candidates questions on the topic of civil rights and other related topics. The candidate will each have one and a half minutes to answer, after which the other candidate will have an opportunity to rebut for one minute. The first candidate will have the opportunity to reply, and we encourage a lively debate, but we will interrupt if someone goes too long. This debate is slated for 50 minutes, and as we draw into the last five minutes, we will end the debate and push into the lightning round. At that time, candidates, you will be asked close-ended questions, and you must answer with concise answers, a concise fashion about your position with either a yes, a no, or a pass.
Denver City Council District 8 is in northeast Denver, covering Park Hill, Stapleton, and portions of East Colfax and Montebello. Now, let's have one and a half minute candidate introductions. We'll start here.
Hello, my name is Patrick Tebow, and I'm a candidate for Denver City Council in District 8. One of the things that gets me most excited about this opportunity is to represent the neighborhoods I grew up in. I grew up in a single-parent home on the East Colfax Corridor, and I'm so grateful to have been raising the example of hard work and determination of a single mom. But most importantly, she taught me the value of be a doer, not a talker. And that's what I've done throughout my professional career. And some of the things that make me confident that I can get to work day one for our District 8 neighborhoods is that I've worked to establish a permanent affordable housing fund statewide, passed rental protections for victims of sexual assault and stalking, occupied a U.S. Senator's office for 36 hours in support of DACA and our Dreamers, and I've served for the past five years on the Executive Committee for NAACP Denver. And so, I'm very thankful to be here tonight, and I'm looking forward to the questions, and thank you very much.
Candidate Ruiz.
Yeah, so my name is Miguel Ceballos Ruiz. Thank you so much for tuning in today and for hosting this. I really do appreciate it. So, I grew up in northeast Denver, and also, my parents had a restaurant on East Colfax, where, you know, we had, we built community for many years. If there's one thing that I'm running for City Council, it's because I'm tired of the displacement of the working class from our city. And this displacement disproportionately affects people of color the most. We've seen a mass displacement, a mass exodus of people who don't afford to live in the city no more. And with each person, with each family that leaves, a valuable jewel leaves our city, and I really feel that Denver has to start valuing the diversity that we have right now in order not to lose that. For me, it's what makes Denver such a wonderful and thriving place to live, and it's what really is drawing a whole lot of people to our city right now, is just the multi-color, multifaceted, multicultural jewel. And so, that's why I'm running, because I really feel that if we don't flip this around, if we don't turn around now, I'm fearful of what Denver will look like in a few years. And we have to challenge the way that the city has been growing. I'm not anti-growth, I actually welcome everyone who is moving here to the city. I was an immigrant once that was new to the city, you know, I was brand-new, and so, I welcome you, however, you have to learn the history of the spaces you now occupy. Thank you.
Thank you. It should also be noted that there are six candidates running for this seat. Lamone Knowles called in sick today, Eric Penn, Blair Taylor, and our incumbent Christopher Herndon were either unwilling or unable to attend. Now, let's get into our questions.
Question one, the topic is homelessness. So, Denver will be voting on Initiative 300, an initiative to allow any individual to engage in activities such as resting and sheltering oneself in non-obstructive manner in an outdoor public place. The Right to Survive Initiative is premised on protecting the homeless from city-mandated property seizures and camping bans that leaves officers confiscating property in all kinds of weather conditions. This is a city-authorized police action which leaves the unhoused facing any adverse health outcomes, including an up-to-death, and which also deprives them of personal property. Do you support 300? If not, or if so, which other areas of our city resources should be mobilized to support our unhoused populations? Patrick.
Yes, I do support Initiative 300, and here's why. It's almost for the same reasons why the opposition campaign has titled "Because We Can Do Better." Well, the problem is, is I feel that we have not done better. We need a better temporary and permanent supportive housing, especially throughout District 8. You often hear a lot of scare tactics from the other side. One of them specifically being is that this bill does not create any new beds. Well, I push back and ask, how many beds has the camping ordinance directly contributed, and how much funds has it contributed to our most vulnerable populations? And that answers zero. Another big opposition that you hear is that it's going to, or that it's poorly written. Well, the thing is, that's one of the beauties of Denver and in Colorado, is we have the ability, as citizens, to engage in the legislative process and get things onto the ballot. But this particular issue should have been spearheaded, and we should have had the leadership from our elected officials. And so, it's going to be poorly written, because average folks don't know how to define a complex legal language into our state statute, and that's why I want to make sure that we actually put forward solid solutions on this issue.
Candidate Ruiz.
You know, for me, the reason that there's so much homelessness and an increase in homelessness in Denver is because of the cost of living. Denver is extremely expensive to live, and so, if we tackled that first, you know, I think would be the right thing to do. But unfortunately, Denver decided to put a camping ban in place first to criminalize the homelessness. And we know how criminalization works, we've seen it in communities of color. It is a civil rights matter. If you give someone a ticket and they don't, and they're not able to make it to court, what happens then? They get a bench warrant, and they spend the night in jail. And who spends money? The city. It is a complete waste of resources. So, yes, I will be voting in favor of Initiative 300, and I'm also in favor of overturning the current camping ban, and City Council should take the initiative and, you know, reverse that this week. That's what they could do immediately. Our current incumbent is not in favor of Initiative 300, he is not in favor of overturning the camping ban, and I'm in favor of overturning that for sure.
Just type out any reply or additional comments.
Yes, so, yeah, actually, I have had a personal relationship with this issue for a long time. One of my, actually, one of my best friends, and so, was when she was in law school up in Boulder, that's actually where the camping ordinance started. She represented the individual who received the first camping ordinance infraction, and the outcome of that case was failure to appear. And so, because of that, and because of issues like the camping ordinance, it does further perpetuate involvement within the criminal justice system. And a lot of times, we are releasing folks back into the public after short terms in jail, worse often than they already are. Could be missing work, could be missing out on medications, could be missing out on community support systems like AA. And so, yeah, I think that this is a really important discussion that we need to continuously have, and actually need good, solid traction for our community.
Our second question will be for candidate Ruiz. Racial equality and equity remain a nationwide concern. A few facts. Colorado had the most extensive KKK networks west of the Mississippi through the 1930s. The grandson of one ran for governor this past year. One neighborhood and the airport are still named after him, and that's Stapleton. Educational equity has failed children of color based on zip code. Gentrification continues unabated according to the Denver gentrification study in 2016. Gentrification is premised on a view of space as profit margin, not community. The Colorado Trust tied historic segregation to modern gentrification. Addressing the racial wealth gap in Colorado, they said, "The latest view of racial and income inequality in the U.S. shows deep and entrenched disparities along racial lines." How does it play out in Colorado? Not well. Across a range of measures, Colorado was failing to provide equitable opportunities across racial lines. Colorado was third in the nation for white supremacist propaganda. White terrorists and right-wing violence are the biggest threat to Americans, yet people of color suffer the brunt of policing. Across this range of issues around racial equity, what are your thoughts on racial equity and equality, and how will you work to move District 8, and by extension, the state of Colorado, towards a more equal and equitable future?
Yeah, so, I see the displacement of communities of color as one of the greatest injustices that is going on in Denver right now. You know, I grew up in Montebello during a time that was a really hard time for our community. We went through a wave of violence in the 90s, the 80s were full of violence as well, and we made it out of that. And the reason that we made it out of that was because the community came together and decided that we were going to have a change within our neighborhoods. And we put in the hard work, the long hours, and it was us. We're the ones who changed our communities and made them beautiful, thriving places to live. And now that we have reached this point in which our communities are desirable, we no longer afford to live there. That is unjust. And it is really clear that there's underlying inequities and systems in place that are propagating this, of course, that are pushing this forward. And what are we going to do as a city in order to overturn and to undo a lot of this? So, I really believe in affordable housing, I'm sorry, in affirmative action policies in housing. I think that that's what we need to be pursuing in Denver, equity, right? And so, I believe that we should have a really rigid and strong investment program back into the communities in the following way. So, I believe that our down payment assistance programs should be increased from 4% to 10%. And we should make it easier for people to apply to those programs. Right now, we don't have the type of, the type of funds to compete with people coming in from out of town to put down on a home. And so, we could do a lot as a city to level that off, to bring equity to that.
Could you just repeat the specific question one more time for me?
What are your thoughts on racial equality and equity, and how will you work to move District 8 and by extension Colorado towards a more equal and equitable future?
Yeah, this, working around equity specifically has been what I've done with my community advocacy work now for years. I've served as the Political Action Chair for NAACP Denver for the past five years, and through that work, I've tried to create the space and the programming for the community to engage on the specific issues that are affecting our neighborhoods in near northeast and northeast Denver. Also, make sure that the elected officials are coming to them. I think that that is a really important thing in near northeast and northeast Denver, is that we can't just have elected officials that either don't show up or only show up around election time. And, but most specifically is, we have to continuously work to make sure we're incorporating as many voices in our legislative decision-making process as possible.
You know, in this, right now in Denver, this really has to be said. We do have a lot of people of color who are in elected office right now, and despite that, they haven't been fighting for us. We have been seeing this forced displacement in our communities, and it's really reached the tipping point, and I believe it's time that we say this. Just because someone is a person of color doesn't mean that they're fighting for the communities of color. And some elected officials that are in office right now have been selling our communities out, one rezoning at a time. I will be the City Council member that actually does the right thing and fights to stop the further displacement of our people.
We had an audience question regarding Donald Trump's threat to send undocumented immigrants to sanctuary cities. As City Council members, would you join other cities across the country in declaring that we welcome immigrants and undocumented immigrants to Denver?
Yes, I think that, and here's what gets me so frustrated, is that I'm so tired of our immigrant populations being treated like a political football. I don't think that that has, that doesn't do anybody justice. And we, we're still trying to work to make sure that our Dreamers and DACA actually have its own specific time on the legislative floor and gets its debate, so we can actually work on comprehensive immigration reform. If you were to take a poll of current legislators, you know, in Washington, D.C., this is something that they want to do and what we need to work on, and the leadership from the executive office, again, just treating people, again, like a political football, is not how we bring folks together and doesn't create an inclusive America.
Yeah, you know, I was brought here as a baby, so, before my second birthday, my parents came here, and the first neighborhood that we lived in was in the Baker neighborhood. So, yes, I do believe that we should declare that we welcome immigrants to Denver. However, more meaningful than that, I believe that we should make Denver a place where working-class immigrants actually afford to live. And that's where our greatest failure under the last seven years in this council member's tenure has been, right? We don't afford to live in the great communities we have built, and that's where I want to attack it. That's where I want to attack the injustice, is to actually build a society where we could remain in these communities that we have built. I think that's where it starts.
So, our next question. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. One in five women and one in 71 men in the United States has been raped at some point in their lives. Forty-two percent of victims experience their first completed rape before the age of 18. A 2016 survey found that 28% of CU Boulder's female undergrads had been sexually assaulted. CU is in the news now for a recent rape. Denver's DA, Beth McCann, was found in 2018 to have prosecuted 33% of rape cases, a small improvement over her predecessor's average of 30%. The Denver Post Rape Tracker shows that Denver has had 122 rapes reported so far this year. That's an average of 38.2 per month, 1.3 per day. The most rapes any neighborhood in Denver has had this year is in five points with nine. The average number of rapes per neighborhood this year is 1.56. How will you use your seat on the council to address these issues and make Colorado a safer place for women and female identified bodies?
Yeah, that's extremely sad to hear, and it's extremely concerning that is going on in Denver right now. I have pushed back on Beth McCann's leadership, and I have, you know, pushed in circumstances that I believe they didn't make the correct choice. In Montebello, we had a murder in which Aurora Police came in and killed someone down the street from where I live. And Beth McCann had a meeting out there in east, in Montebello, and I asked her publicly to revisit that decision, and no charges were filed against that police officer. You know, and so, I have a track record of pushing back, and I would really ask to sit, you know, to sit down with Beth McCann and ask how we, what we could do together as a city, right? Me as a council member and her as a DA, in order to make our cities safer. We absolutely do need to have better policies in place, if those are the statistics. And I think that it begins with believing accusers and not making them feel that they're doing the wrong thing by coming forward. We should be encouraging that. We need to have a whole lot of education in our communities about consent. A lot of youths haven't had that, you know, so, modernizing our sexual education in classrooms and letting kids know what consent is and what it isn't. I know at DU also, it's an issue. There's a lot of people who, you know, who have been assaulted at DU, and that's within Denver's boundaries, so we absolutely have to do better.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, so, I'm proud to say that this is something that I have specifically worked on at the legislative level. As I mentioned in my opening, as the Chief of Staff for both State Senator and State Representative, specifically with Representative Dominique Jackson and Colorado Coalition Against Sexual Assault, we were able to pass better rental protections for victims of sexual assault and stalking. During that, during those stakeholder processes, I heard just heart-wrenching stories about victims who, a lot of times, were the perpetrators of the violence, were landlords or someone living in the building. We're discussing how hard it is to move just as, just folks without being in these situations, but just think if you had to put a safety plan in place, and you weren't able to put first and last month's rent into a, into a new place. And so, that's why I was very excited to work on that initiative. But some of the things that we specifically have to do is, we have to, we have to find a good working relationship between our system-based and our community-based outlets to report sexual violence, and I wish I could continue on with that thought.
Thank you, Patrick. Do you have a rebuttal?
You know, I heard a little bit about Assemblywoman Jackson's efforts that she tasked you with. I wouldn't say those are your efforts, right? I would say those are her efforts that you helped with. And I'm wondering what other individual things you believe we should do in the city? And as a follow-up for candidate Ruiz, we talked about the police a little bit and about Beth McCann. I didn't hear anything about specifically the police, right? What protocols are in place for police oversight that the council can provide in situations where police officers are known to tell women or ask them, "What were you doing there? How much did you drink? Are you sure that's what happened?" Right? Start by believing, yes, but who needs to start by believing if the failure is in the evidentiary train that is derailed before it gets to Beth McCann?
No, yeah, absolutely, and so, that does take a re, you know, a shift in culture within the police community, our service members in the police force. And, you know, as a board member of the Colorado Latino Forum, I did help push to create a new, you know, a new use-of-force policy, but we need to, we need to create that and push for criminal justice reform on many more levels than just the use of force policy. And so, I really believe that we need to have an open conversation about this specific topic. Why is only 33% of people committing these crimes being prosecuted? I really believe that we have the duty to look at that next, for sure.
So, I think I just kind of want to touch on some of the things that I was talking about earlier. I think it's the conversation between remedies, between system-based, what I mean by system-based is a victim having to go through law enforcement. There's also out there is community-based organizations and advocates that help victims through this process. A lot of times, our law enforcement officers are looking to just catch the perpetrator and not actually embrace the experience of the victim. And I think that that's a vital piece of the conversation that our community-based organizations and systems allow victims. This is also, in some instances, victims may not want to prosecute out of further fear of further violence, or it might potentially damage a family situation, kids might have to move into foster situations, and so, I think that we really need to highlight both of those avenues.
I think the advocate's point is a very good one. I used to work at the Blue Bench, and we trained on community advocates, working with sane nurses, and following the victim or survivor through the entire process and dealing with the police and that kind of stuff. It is important that we start with believing, but we need to have a lot more ideas for the whole path, from, I mean, why men are able to do this and get away with it, all the way to how they survive. Let's move on to the next question. This is on community wellness, community wellness. According to denverpublichealth.org's City Council District Report for District 8, life expectancy in your district is 79.7 years, 1.1 years longer than Denver overall. Differences in life expectancy between districts show that place matters. Community policies that address health equity all play important roles in improving health for residents. Eighteen percent of District 8 young adults from 18 to 24 years old use tobacco, which is 1% higher than Denver overall. Ten percent of public schoolchildren aged 2 through 17 are obese, which is 6% lower than Denver overall. And 14% of the adults in your district have been diagnosed with depression, which is 1% higher than the average, which is 13% for Denver. Denver.gov states, "The health of a community depends on more than access to healthcare. Healthy communities are composed of our physical environment, healthy opportunities, support, and where individuals easily connect with community partners, healthy food systems, and also with safe environments. Increased access to these items allows individuals of a healthy community to thrive, and for communities that aren't healthy to be healthier. Do you believe that your district is serving its community equitably in these areas, and if not, what will you do to address disparities in the district?" And we'll start with Mr. Tebow.
Tebow.
Tebow, you're exactly right.
So, I think the big thing, healthy neighborhoods is a dovetail into how the housing, transportation, a lot of the issues that we're discussing. I personally, I have to shop outside of the district because there aren't any close grocery options near where I live in the district. If I didn't want to use single-occupant car to get to a grocery store in the district, if I wanted to use bus, it would take me 45 minutes to an hour, because I would have to transfer buses to get there. So, we really have to be thinking what wellness and healthy lifestyles looks like for working families, especially in housing. It's not just two and three-bedroom options, but what are the amenities in place for families? What are the walkable amenities in hospitality? How close are you to fixed transit? These are real conversations that we need to be having as we're trying to create inclusive housing throughout, not only city, but in specifically District 8.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, there is not a lot of equity in that. Those numbers sound great, but if we break them down and we start looking, looking at the income, right? If we break that down by income, it's true, and I suspect that those numbers would come out to be that people who have less of an income are unhealthier. In Montebello, southwestern Montebello, the part of District 8, there is no grocery store option, there is no healthy food option. It is still a registered food desert, because it's more than a mile away from the closest grocery store. And, you know, there is an organization that I'm a board member of, named the Montebello Organizing Committee, who's working to bring a black-owned, healthy food store to that part of Montebello and help alleviate that problem. But this is also the case in northeast Park Hill, and also, we know where Patrick lives and along Colfax. And so, no, we do not have equity. Right now, also, another huge problem that we're going to be facing is they're going to be digging up two Superfund sites to build the I-70 Central Project. What is the city going to do to keep the residents safe through that construction? They're going to be putting all these contaminants, pollutants, carcinogens into the air. Is the city doing anything to protect us? Also, we're building communities next to toxic waste dumps in Stapleton, right next to the arsenal. So, is the city continuously monitoring radiation? What are they doing on that front? So, health is more than numbers, and I really believe that we have to be on top of that, for sure.
Really quick, did you want to reply? That was your question to start, and then we have a follow-up from the web.
I'm sure. I'm happy to take the question from the web.
Great. So, the area surrounding I-70 and Swansia and Elrea.
Elrea.
Elrea and Globeville encompasses the most toxic U.S. zip code, where some families have reported multi-generation effects from living on a highway and in a Superfund site. The EPA Community Advisory Group contends that remediation of the Vasquez I-70 Superfund site is incomplete, and that the EPA is seeking and that the EPA is seeking to prematurely remove the site from the National Priorities List of superfund sites. What do you think the response should be?
I think specifically for, we, there's not the, and not just with our superfund sites, but we're seeing actually on different projects throughout Denver is that we're not doing the, the proper soils mitigations. Especially in the most toxic zip code, you know, in our city and in the country. We, we're going to be doing a, a lot of subterranean work and we're going to be bringing a lot of things into the surface and then outward into the community. So that first step of making sure that we have the, the proper soils mitigations is vitally important. We also have to make sure eight oh two one eight is not, is not a popular dumping ground for heavy industry. I think, especially in sites that are close proximity to generational neighborhoods as well.
No, and so I was one of the leading proponents, one of the leading voices in favor of rerouting I-70. And I was opposed to this I-70 ditch project from the beginning. It was done in a really unjust and dishonest way. We, that highway should still be rerouted through the two seventy route. Globe area, Swansia is a neighborhood that is eighty percent Latino. And the residents of that area suffer from a whole lot more respiratory illnesses because of that highway going through their backyard. You know, so I think that is not too late to, to change this. Governor Polis promised that he would revisit this decision. And so I urge anyone who is listening to, you know, send him an email. Where, where is that? Where did that disappear after he got elected? You know, a lot of us sat down with him and asked him personally. And he said that, yeah, he would revisit that and see, really honestly look into rerouting I-70 to the two seventy route. It's unjust. We have the opportunity to get rid of this highway and, and push it out of Denver. And that's what we should still be talking about right now.
Move on to the next question.
A topic near our hearts as media professionals. Media is in crisis in Colorado. Denver Open Media is under attack as Mayor Hancock has worked to defund this important project and remove equipment. The Denver Post and the Daily Camera are region's only two major print newspapers, are owned by hedge funds who are busy extracting capital and laying off staff. Fake news is the slur of the day, thanks to our president. How do we support our local newspapers, community journalism, and organizations like Denver Open Media that work to be a pillar in our community and for, for information and provide equal access to everyone?
You know, absolutely. We should be subs, directly subsidizing your efforts, right? As a city, we, the more information that's out there, the healthier democracy is going to be, the more participation in, in our democracy we're going to have. One of the things that I'm struggling with right now as a candidate is the fact that historically, we have such low voter turnout in municipal elections. And so just even, even notifying people that there's an election, even just informing them, is taking up so much of my time that I believe that the media should definitely be more in a, in a better, robust place to be able to help us move our democracy towards a better place. And that's, that's direct. And that's why, you know, both me and Patrick are here today to support you because of course, right, we see the value in having more discussion and more, and more opinions and, and different points of view. You know, we don't always agree on everything, even though we're a city full of, of good liberals, right? And so we need to have that discussion at the forefront for sure.
So number one, come and take a class down here at, at Denver Open Media. I, I actually, I remember back in twenty-fourteen, I took a, a free Dreamweaver class down here. And just the, the resources and the fantastic resources that you all provide, especially through the community education is so vital. Especially when we're, what you do with those classes, you're providing a void for someone who may not have the time or the resources to go right back into college or get some professional certifications. And you're providing a, a stepstone towards that. But also, yeah, like Miguel said, we need to do a, a better job of making sure that you all can keep the lights on. Don't kill Big Bird. Let's get PBS as well. So yeah, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of community television and radio. Regular listener, listener to KGNU. And if, watch the programming, be a part, and give money when you can.
Just to follow up, you're the first candidate, Mr. Ruiz, to bring up pub, public subsidies for news agencies. And I, I think that's important because it, it is a solution. Somebody earlier was against that idea while suggesting that newspapers are like a public utility, which are oftentimes subsidized. Follow-up question, rather than renew support for public access media in two thousand and eighteen, Denver's Department of Marketing and Media Services, under Mayor Hancock, removed control of Denver's three public access television stations to the city, resulting in the city co-opting control of media and content from the public. Government control of the only public TV forum for free expression and dissent compromises First Amendment rights of the people. Access to equipment, facilities, and classes by the public has been greatly diminished since the city has removed much of the video broadcast equipment from Denver Open Media. Is mayoral control of public access media another example of power overreach by the mayor's office? We'll go here.
Yeah. So absolutely, you know, I do believe that we should have a strong council system in Denver. And as a city council member, I would be working to take some power away from our mayor. Like, our mayor has way too much power. We've seen it over and over again. That decision was the wrong decision. And as a city council member, I'll be doing everything that I can in order to reverse that, right? And that's the status, that's the state of our democracy here locally in Denver. You know, people talk about what's going on nationally and we are being gaslighted by our president, but what's going on here in Denver, right? We're not all that far away from that either. If we're publicly, if we're attacking our, you know, our public sources of information, then I believe we failed as a city and we should reverse course and correct that, definitely.
Is mayoral control of public access media another example of power overreach by the mayor's office?
Yes, we, we are too top-heavy, you know, within our Denver municipal government. A lot of times if you will ask a current councilperson, you know, a lot of times if the community wants a different result than the mayor's agenda, city council will just say, "Oh, our, our hands are tied." Well, no, I mean, city council is an important piece to our municipal legislative process and we need to have a healthy, healthy discourse between our executive branch at the municipal level and our city council. Because if, if you're just kicking your feet up on the desk and waiting, waiting for decrees from the mayor, we're actually not, we're actually not having any progress. And that's why we need strong council folks, you know, at the city and county building to make sure that we're, they're actually spearheading efforts and leading the charge on efforts in coordination with the mayor's office. And again, not just sitting and waiting to work on things that are from the mayor's office.
One last follow-up for Mr. Ruiz. You called us a city full of liberals, good liberals, which I don't think is, is, is a false statement. At the same time, you were one of three candidates endorsed by Denver Socialists for DSA.
Yes, sir. Listen, so I was one of the six people who ran the Colorado Democratic Party and we helped reform under Morgan Carroll's leadership of the party and make it an open, inclusive, and welcoming party. And that led to our great victories in two thousand and eighteen. We really changed the culture. You know, we had the reputation of being this party that made decisions in, in back smoke-filled rooms. And I don't think that that was, you know, completely inaccurate. You know, I do believe that as a city, we should be taking care of people rather than corporations. And so, yeah, I am extremely proud to have been, to earn the endorsement of the Democratic Socialists of America. And I am a good social Democrat, right? I believe that the model, it needs to be changed. A lot of our labor has been exploited and we definitely need to revisit the equity that we could build as a city. So I am in favor of rent controls. I think that rent should only be allowed to increase a certain percentage every year. I am in favor of a living wage in Denver, way more than fifteen dollars an hour for city workers. Most city workers are already doing that. That's obvious that that move by the mayor's office was a campaign ploy. And so, you know, we need to extend that to every worker in the city and county of Denver in an equitable way and go beyond that.
Excellent. I know that question was directly for Mr. Ruiz, but if you want to identify as a, where you are on the political spectrum and how you feel about social democracy?
I've, I've been a lifelong Democrat, you know, ever, ever since I was able to register to vote at eighteen. I've, I've had a D behind my name. Specifically with the, so I guess, you know, I fall along the progressive political persuasion as well. And the thing for me is when we're, so a lot of things that we're, we're talking about that are labeled as a socialist political persuasion, for me, the, taking care of folks, making sure that the, the least among your community is uplifted as well, were values that I was raised with. It's not something that I adopted along the way through political discussion, but these are values that I was raised with and making sure that I'm always going to use my time, talent and to make sure that we're able to uplift all voices and bodies in our community.
Did you have a follow-up?
Well, the only thing that I would add to that is that as a city, we have heavily subsidized corporations and we've given away a lot of money. And we have followed that model of corporate welfare in Denver. And it's something that we really need to step up and snap out of. And that's the type of city council member that, that I will be. I'll be a city council member that builds up our people and allows our people to actually afford to live in Denver, not only corporations, right? Or huge, huge companies and LLCs.
Gentlemen, it's time for the lightning round.
All right.
So first, Denver is unveiling a new transportation department to supersede RTD in, in the city. Are you for or against? Patrick?
Yes, but I wish I could talk about that more. Yes.
Transition Denver to fully renewables by two thousand and thirty or face extinction as a species? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The psilocybin initiative, legalize mushrooms?
Decriminalize mushrooms. That's my fault.
Decriminalize mushrooms, yes or no?
Oh, I wish I could talk more about that. I believe in decriminalizing all drugs, so yes.
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 State Representative Julie Gonzalez has proposed removing the ban against rent control to allow cities to decide for themselves what works, what works best. Support rent control in Denver, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, thanks Julie.
Do you support deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA? Yes or no? Patrick?
Yes, I do, and the parents as well, DAPA.
The Olympics Initiative, for or against?
Oh, no Olympics.
No.
So no Olympics and that means yes on three oh two, right?
So yes on it and no on it?
Or, so, so I'm not in favor of the Olympics, so I'm not.
Okay. So yes?
Yes.
Yes means no.
It's the way, it's the way it's worded.
Right. April tenth was Equal Pay Day. The Equal Pay for Equal Work Act was recently heard in committee. Do you support a law to ensure equal pay? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Ban fracking in Colorado, yes or no?
Yes.
Absolutely.
There's an organization advocating for renaming public spaces that honored Denver's former mayor Benjamin Stapleton, who was a member, supporter, and agent of the Ku Klux Klan. Rename Stapleton, yes or no?
Do that yesterday, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
And finally, ending with some very important geopolitical intrigue. Gentlemen, who's going to win the Game of Thrones?
Oh, my goodness.
Any idea?
Be careful with this answer, you guys.
Be careful. This'll get you voted out.
I don't want to make anyone mad about Game of Thrones, so no comment.
No comment?
The dragons.
The dragons win.
Great, great.
At this point, gentlemen, we would like to ask you for one and a half minutes of closing statements. I believe we began with Patrick, so we'll start this time with Mr. Ruiz.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you so much for having me here today. Denver is, you know, it's not on the right path right now. Our elected officials are telling us right now that everything is fine and dandy. Everything is just honky-dory, absolutely not. There's been a lot of us who've been left behind by the rising tide. If you look at who was forced to leave out of our city, there's a lot of us who would love to live in Denver, believe me. The black and brown community and our cultural jewels, there's no reason that we wanted to leave that. But it's a matter of fact, it's, it's an unjust system of displacement that we have in place right now. And that's what I want to really focus on as your city council member. A Denver that does not include people of colors, just a Denver, a Denver that I'm not going to sit idly by and allow to happen. So I welcome your vote this May seventh. You could start voting right now, actually. You probably have a ballot on the way to your house. My name is Miguel A. Adrian Sebailes Ruiz, Miguel Adrian Sebailes Ruiz. My whole name's on the ballot, right? And my website is migelfordenver.com. I please welcome your communication and your added involvement in this municipal election. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for having us here this evening and thanks for watching and listening at home or in your cars. This, this election is, is really important, especially about the direction that we're going to pursue as a city. There are many voices that feel that they don't, that Denver's not welcome to them anymore. And so specifically in the neighborhoods I grew up in, you could use to, the neighborhood character is that you could find every walk of life, race, creed, gender, background, all living on one block, and we're losing that identity. And we need to preserve that neighborhood history and culture, which is unique through, throughout our city. We can't just squeeze round pegs in, into square holes just to satisfy the conversation of development. Need to be conscious of these things. And I'm always going to be working for the voices in our community because before I ever came to ask you for your vote, I came to ask you, are you registered to vote? Did you get your ballot in? Can you come to this community meeting? And so I'm going to continue my work as a, as a councilperson to ensure that we're able to keep our community voices strong within the decision-making process for District Eight. I'd be honored to have your support, honored before May seventh. And my website is patrickthenumberfourdenver.com.
Thank you, Patrick and Miguel. Thank you so much for being here and addressing these questions for the public. We wish you the best, both of you, with your races and for, for your campaigns. We really want to thank the audience for being here tonight and we'd really like to thank Denver Open Media and the Open Media Foundation and Civic Matters for hosting this event. I hope that you all have learned and gleaned some information here that has set you up for the elections that are upcoming. Thank you so much again for joining us for the no BS debates. I'm Sarah Ali.
And I'm Dale Vaca.
Have a good night.